Could you please join me in a moment of silent prayer for reflection? Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Cathy Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here. Please stand and join me in the quiet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session.
I move that we review and accept the agenda for this session.
I second.
Cathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes, Aliar.
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 I knew I was going to put you. Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Item 3.1 is the sworn in of new board members. Superintendent Sire.
Yes. If I could ask our three new board members, newly elected board members, to stand. And I am going to read the oath, which I'll ask you to repeat. Excuse me. I think that's nerves that I... And so there, each of you will say your own name, of course, during the oath. And I'll try to rephrase it so that you can remember, or you have a different view, you can follow along as well. So if you would please raise your right arm and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear...
I, Nicole for Cohen, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duties of trustee...
And discharge the duties of trustee.
For the Lake Havasah Unified School District Number One...
For the Lake Havasah Unified School District Number One.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you. The record here reflects that our board members were all sworn in and took the oath.
Anybody want to introduce their guests? Go ahead.
I would like to introduce my parents, Jim and Cathy Beisman. They are from Newport, Oregon. They're visiting. And I'd like to introduce my three children. Nicholas Roman, he's in eighth grade. Josephine Roman is in seventh grade. And Allison Roman is in fifth grade.
Okay.
Welcome.
Congratulations to all three of you.
Thank you.
Item 3.2 is election of board president and vice president.
I would like to make a motion...
Yes.
That we reelect Mr. Mastin as our president.
Is there a second? Hearing that, I'll entertain another nomination.
I nominate Cathy Cox for president.
I second Cathy Cox for president.
Carrie, is there any discussion?
There is some, I have a couple things I would like to say. I think that, I think John's done a very good job communicating with our community. I think that it's really important that we start off not being partisan. This kind of indicates that we're going to have some partisanship here in the school board. And Mrs. Cox, while we don't agree on everything, I don't think is qualified to take the helm at this time. And I think it's important. I think our schools are thriving right now. And a change in leadership, I think, would be detrimental to that. And I just wanted to say for the record, you know, when I came on this board, I wasn't thrilled with the president at hand when we had our first election. That wasn't my first choice. But she was the most qualified to be president at that time, and that's why I voted for her to be president. So, not that this will change any of our new board members' minds, but we also have the issue of, you know, the complaint that has been filed against Mrs. Cox. And I think that should be taken into consideration. And I'm not trying to, you know, bring that up and make an issue out of it other than to say that when we have somebody in that leadership role, I think that they should be free and clear of any, you know, potential wrongdoing within our district. I think it would send a bad message to put Mrs. Cox in that seat at this moment. With all due respect, not trying to start out on a bad note, but...
Any other discussion?
I would disagree that my nomination reflects partisanship. I believe that my nomination reflects the person that I feel is best qualified to take on the role of president. And regardless of personal politics or feelings, I will vote and nominate according to my best impression and my conscience.
Any discussion past that?
Archiana...
Aliar.
Aliar? Doing the city guess? Yes, yes or no? Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
No.
John Mastin?
I will stand.
Cathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
I will vice president.
Now we'll entertain a motion for vice president.
I would like to make a motion that we elect John Mastin as vice president.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another nomination?
I would like to make a motion to elect Lisa Roman as vice president.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I'm just curious why anybody would think anybody that is sitting as a first-time member would be elected as vice president if we weren't starting off on a, you know, partisan line? Not talking to you, sorry, I'm trying to get that, and it's not personal. Archie?
Yes.
I was talking to you, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering.
I'm, I, I just feel like we need some change, and I have discussed things in the past with Lisa, and I think she would be very well qualified, especially as a mother of school-going children and everything. So yeah, I, I...
May I inquire on that statement? I have four children in this district. I'm a father of school-going children. Why does that not qualify me?
I didn't say it didn't qualify you. I just think Lisa is the person that I would like to recommend. If we vote that way, why if we don't, I'm not the only one voting.
All right. Any further discussion?
I just have one thing, that I don't think is atypical in small communities and small boards such as this for oncoming new members to a similar role of leadership. I don't think that that's necessarily unheard of.
Okay. Any further discussion? Carrie?
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
I will stand again.
Cathy Cox?
Okay. 3.3 is the sworn in of new board officers.
If you would stand and raise your right hand. And this time, you're going to state your name and your office. I name and office...
I, Cathy Cox, president.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of...
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of...
President or vice president.
Vice president.
For the Lake Havasah Unified School District Number One.
For the Lake Havasah Unified School District Number One.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Sorry, I didn't hear you on that.
Do solemnly swear.
I declare the president and vice presidents to an end.
I will congratulate Mrs. Cox and pass her the gavel.
Thank you.
And then the question for you, Mrs. Cox, is where would you like your vice president? So in some situations, the vice president sits enough to the president, and others...
Well, today, I just have the honor to sit here.
Actually, I'm going to move the license plate.
Okay, but I'm going to ask you to take the home home task...
We'll preemptive the session.
Oh, I didn't mean to. Well, I haven't been home right now, so I... I now declare the governing board seated and organized for 2019.
I don't, I'll use my words. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion that determines that the board will meet on the third, two seats of each calendar month. Someone make that motion?
I make a motion. To... To adopt the schedule page, or to keep the... To reflect the schedule.
Okay. And now your second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is this the same day as the council? Are we back on the same day as the council? No. It was opposite, okay.
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman? Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Cathy Cox?
Yes.
You want to tell us what the time of the meeting is to know?
If you can, Mr. Murray is the...
Okay. Mr. Murray?
Madam President, members of the board, it is recommended the governing board appoint and approve a governing board member ex officio to the Employee Benefit Trust Board trustees effective January 8, 2019. Arizona Rides Statute 15-382(c) specifies trustees are appointed by the governing board, and if a member of the governing board or employee of the school district is acting as a trustee, the trust shall be administered by at least five joint trustees, of whom not more than one may be a member of the governing board. And no more than one may be an employee of the school district. The Employee Benefit Trust Board of Trustees terms are three years, therefore, the trustee membership would be as follows. And you can see down at the bottom of that rationale, the current numbers, and you'll notice that there is a vacancy there due to Mr. Murray retiring. And this is the action I had placed before you for that.
And we can mention that it's a non-voting position?
It is, yeah. As an ex officio, it's a non-voting position.
Okay, all right. So let's begin by asking who would be interested in serving on the EBT.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we forego having an ex officio member on the board altogether.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
The reason that I make that motion is because now the meetings are open to the public. So this, we had this because they were closed to the public before, so we had somebody from the board sitting there. So any of the board members, these EBT meetings are always noticed now for the public, so all the board members can go. So it just seems unnecessary to point a specific person from the board to the trust since it's a non, it just creates, especially since we have so many board members, there's going to be a lot of work already. Everybody can go when they want to, so I just don't think that it's necessary anymore. I think that we kept Pat on because he was already on as an ex officio member, but we changed the whole trust document, we changed the voting rights of the board members, so again.
Okay, my question is, that position is in the bylaws, but would we have to amend the bylaws in order to not fill that position?
It is a, it is a recommendation.
I don't think it's required.
It's not required, I know that.
All right. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Carrie?
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Cathy Cox? The next one to go on the agenda, sorry, is a discussion. I've, I informed, we don't have a, a page that goes with that. We will be starting at the budget committee for the 2018-19 school year, for the budget planning for the 2019-20 school year. Because the budget meetings are internal committee, there can be no more than two board members, you have 10, otherwise they have to be posted as public meetings. And so we wanted to have the board decide among themselves who they would like to be appointed to the budget committee.
Okay. Any discussion? I don't, I, I think, when you can make a motion...
I'm, I'm sorry, we can't discuss anything as a point of order. We can't discuss anything unless there's a motion on the floor.
Okay. I just think it would be nice if anyone expressed interest in this position. It's a very important position.
I would, I would, to get us into a better legal footing, I would move that Mrs. Aliar and Mrs. Cohen sit on the motion. No.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I would be happy to sit on it because I am basically in finance and accounting, and I think that would be a bit difficult for me to contribute.
One of the things that might be important to know is when the commitment is for the meetings.
So now that we have the names of board representation, you'll be...
We have a buddy, yeah.
Well, now that we may have names here shortly, emails will be going to go out as a committee. So we can expect towards the end of July, or end of this month, end of January, and into the middle to end of February, approximately three to four meetings that are usually a few hours each for each of those meetings in length. So once I receive final approval, and know that those two representatives are going to be involved in that email.
Yeah, I will not be available to the first of February, in case that you need me on.
Until the first of January?
Yes, I will be away from the 22nd to the 31st of January.
That would be one meeting. Our current, our current plan is to hold a meeting the weekend of 28th of January.
So that would be up to the board if you want to have... Remembering that Mrs....
Would that mean the first meeting? I think that's a really important meeting to attend.
I can do it, I can do next year.
Okay. And you have another nomination?
I appreciate that John nominated me, and I've served on the committee for the last three years, but I think in light of the fact that Mrs. Roman is sitting in the vice president's seat, that it would be important for her to be on that committee as vice president. So if Mrs. Aliar wants to be on it, then I would rather not sit on it and have Mrs. Roman there because it's most important for her to come up to speed, because if Cathy's not here, she's going to be sitting in that seat, and it's important for her to have that information. So I'm going to be voting no on some of them.
Just so I have a better idea of the committee, how often, I mean, does the budget committee typically meet?
We typically will meet once, about every other week, for a total of up to four meetings. And I could, I could extend depending on the need of the committee. Typically, it's three to four meetings, and it's usually every other week, beginning at the end of January.
Is there limited window that the budget committee...
Then they give everything back to the, to the board to approve some of the contracts.
Based on what I've heard, I will draw up my motion.
Thank you.
Mrs. Roman, will you draw your second?
I will draw my second.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we now?
I would like to make a motion that Mrs. Aliar and Mrs. Roman sit on the budget committee, or budget committee.
I'm sorry, can you mic up?
I would like to make a motion that Mrs. Roman and Mrs. Aliar sit on the budget committee for the board.
Well, let me ask you, did you say that you can serve, or not, Mrs. Roman?
I haven't said yet.
Okay. I will second the motion so that we can have discussion. Go ahead.
I'm not sure you heard me, Nicole, but it's not recommended that I sit on it because I won't be up for the first meeting.
Right, but there's three other meetings, and that's your background, isn't that...
It's true, but...
Part of why you ran for the board was so that you could be involved in that?
Absolutely, but I can wait till next year. It's not...
I think it's more important that you just miss one meeting and get up to speed as quickly as possible. But it's...
It's a choice. It's up to everyone.
Is it going, the meeting going to be taped?
No. It's not happening.
I know. That's why, I mean, I wanted to put out there, and there's no way to, or to get caught up at first meeting.
Yeah, I think in that case, it's better, right, because I'll miss a lot of stuff if it's not taped.
Mrs. Roman, how about you?
Well, to answer your question, I'm not opposed to serving on the committee. I am wondering, do we need to make a decision on this tonight?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And do you mind if I call out my phone and run my schedule? I do not want to over commit or commit and then have to back out, so I'd rather check Okay, and what time are the meetings, and how long do they normally run? I'm specifically interested in the 28th meeting. I'm sorry, I hate to be so specific, I just, again, don't want to commit and then not be able to...
They usually begin around 3 o'clock, 3:30, and they can last, and usually it's about two to three hours.
Okay.
And as we get closer towards the final meeting, it may last a little longer, depending on if we need a call toward the fourth meeting, we might just try to finish it upon the third, so we don't have to extend into that fourth meeting. So usually, as we get towards the end, we all make a, just a decision at that point, whether we want to continue or overschedule the meeting.
I'm a little bit in the same boat as Mrs. Aliar in the sense that the 28th is going to be difficult for me.
It's the week of the 28th. It's not necessarily the 28th, but it can be the week of the 28th. We don't have the exact dates.
Well, it couldn't be the 30th or the 31st because we're already doing curriculum onsite meetings. Okay. It couldn't be the 29th because that's the day of the board retreat, so it would have to be this Friday, is that correct? If it's not the 28th, it's solved.
They could be at the same time. They could be at the same time as the curriculum meetings.
I will look to get those dates, they're not on my phone, so I will look to get those for you.
So then, where are we?
I withdraw my motion.
So I would have to withdraw my second? Yeah, I withdraw my second.
So what's yours?
I will make, I will make a new motion since we haven't discussed Mrs. Cox and Mr. Mastin possibly serving on the budget committee.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion that Mr. and Mrs. Cox and Mr. Mastin serve on the budget committee.
Is there a second?
I second you.
Any discussion?
Actually, I was going to propose that Nicole and I, we're going to propose two years.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
I will withdraw my motion.
Will you withdraw your second?
Yeah.
Are you?
I move that Mrs. Cohen and I serve on the project committee issue.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay. Carrie?
Archiana Aliar?
Yes.
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Cathy Cox?
Yes.
The only, the only other area we probably should be aware of is that we do meet with the city formally, and typically the president sits on those. And so our, our next meeting for that is the 28th at 6 o'clock.
2 o'clock.
At 2 o'clock. I apologize. I was telling you that 2 o'clock, so it was early afternoon, Mrs. Cox.
Yeah, at the district office.
This one will be at the district office.
Do we need a motion?
No, I just wondered, do I can know, if you couldn't attend, then you could ask someone to attend.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so are we ready to adjourn, Mrs.? All right, I am asking for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Need you second?
No, I was actually going to, I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I, would I...
Yes, because we don't have a second.
The retreat is January 29th, and since it's just a spy, I was wondering, I cannot be here as most of you know. I was wondering if it's possible to reschedule this because it would be valuable for me to attend.
Mrs. Asayen?
We currently have a room and refreshments and all of that planned. I suppose that we could look into it. I know the calendar is starting to get pretty booked. I suppose that we could look into it, I know the calendar is starting to get pretty booked. Is that something that is.
Because the room is at, as you see, that would be.
That's the problematic one, is because we had to reserve that room a couple of months in advance.
Is that a meeting?
I think it's a public meeting. It is a public meeting, it could be.
Okay. Can we, can we manage to do that, and then you can watch the.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay.
All right, then, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So, move.
Second.
All right. Karen?
Lisa Roman?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Archiana Alliar?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Thank you. Just give me a moment, taking these signatures.